... For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is March 2nd, 2015, the time is 7:00 PM. The record meeting of Greensburg Council is called to order. At this moment, please silence any electronic devices. Roll call, please, Bridgette.
One.
There.
One.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
There.
Here.
Jane.
Here.
P. Book the minutes for the February 2nd meeting last month. Are there any additions or corrections the council sees? If not, I'll take a motion to accept them as you perceive them. I'll make them.
Motion second.
Motion made by Terry, second, five late. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve, same sign. First thing we have on the agenda tonight, we have the Honorable Mayor Campbell of North Vernon here to present a plaque to the Greensburg Fire Department. First, Mayor, would you like to speak?
Yeah, absolutely. Never missed that opportunity. Some are pretty honorable things. I've witnessed. If you don't go ahead by North Vernon, we lost a huge part of our history. And we lost 10 buildings in the fire. One of the, there was over 23, 24 units that spawned many communities. Greensburg was that first. They stepped up to the plate. And it was a lot of lucky things happened, I tell you. The fire broke out just a day ago. And so people leaving their home, going to work, going to school, whatever. There's a lot of departments, just like you, your community. Also, plus some lucky things happened as the right equipment got there. It's an agreement that a lot of mayors have between their communities. It's mutual aid agreement. Greensburg Fire Department, they honored to write to the letter. They were there and they brought the big truck. We had seven of those operating at one moment. And it was probably that effort between all these larger fire departments. With all the townships responding, even little towns that had one truck. They took a risk and sent. But the men of Greensburg, North Vernon, and your city, Gary, they just took one phone call and things just fell into place. I was really humbled by what I witnessed through a tragedy. And there were some lucky things. There was no casualties that could very easily. But it wiped out the oldest block they had. Actually, one block, I had a business, an active business, and there you go. So most of them are looking for places to go to. They are, and if the state of Indiana honors their promises, we're going to rebuild, we're going to bring it back from the ashes. And probably, there'll be a new mayor there. We'll probably invite the old mayor here to say, come down and look at what we've done or what we helped us during the celebration one couple years from now or something like that. But Gary, I want to thank you and Mr. Executive of the City and the Fire Chief responding to the need of our city out there. Made this round, near the end of it. And just, just say, I'd only worry, I think, just say, when I get around these firefighters and first responders, and you've got the first class meeting here. For me, in the heart, I just thank you. Let me be one of the witnesses of that. And I do have one chief, my chief, he's got a little token. And it's only a token. There's not enough of anything I could, I could give you that could say how thankful and grateful I am. This token of our appreciation comes from that here for 24 hours like here today.
Assistant Chief.
Rick McGills, my chief of North Vernon. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, I'm, Assistant Chief, both you and your two firefighters that worked the fire that day, it'd be nice when the time is right to present it to you. I'm a bit of an introvert. I'm shy, so you know, I don't get up in front too awfully much. But you know, November 21st was, really was kind of like our 9/11 there in North Vernon. And as the mayor said, we were very fortunate, though, that we had no loss of life. And I always tried to get around to as many of the different department heads there as what I could, when, as we were beginning to kind of scale things down and to offer my thanks. And one chief said, he said, hey, he said, it's what we do. And I kind of built that into our mantra then for this. I said, we all hear about firefighters and the story that, you know, they're the ones that rush in when everyone else is rushing out. And I said, that's because, that's what we do. Had five people there that was hurt when a wall collapsed. And we sent to the hospital to be checked out. Out of those five, three came back, even after I found out later on that they were told by the hospital to go home. They came back and said, okay, what do you need for us to do now? And I said, well, I guess that's because that's what we do. Fire departments step up to help each other, whether it be fire, tornado, floods, whatever the case may be, because that's what we do. And communities step up to help each other out. And I said, maybe for those that stand outside the borders of this state and look and kind of wonder why, we just simply say, because that's what we do. So tonight, on behalf of the citizens of North Vernon, Mayor Campbell and his administration, myself and the North Vernon Fire Department, we'd like to present this to the Greensburg Fire Department and the city of Greensburg and to say thank you for what you did.
We're glad to help you out, and we know you do the same thing in return for us. And so if you've done that and the fast horse come up and recovered for us, we had both ladder trucks up to chuck bill that one time, so we both try to cover and help each other out, so we really appreciate it. The only thing I had a hard time was getting these guys to come back home. So, but thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor. Every chance you have, thank these guys. I brought Sol in action, you're driving by that firehouse, CM on the street never failed to thank him for the job they did. And that goes to any of the first responders or the people who are on that front line. And Gary, thank you for.
Can you add more to this story? Which I've known since one or four, seven years now.
Yeah, one year.
Used to race with him when he had air and I had more. You know, when we had the tornado, our cloister camper called their city down there and said, hey, we need some equipment. And the answer was, you know, from North Vernon, come and get what you need, keep it long as you need. If they need some help, we'll set some help. And that's mutual aid, one community helping another one out. So, you know, we feel good that we're able to repay the debt that we owe North Vernon and to the special use of, I call the mayor Soup, that's all, it's only by, his last name's Campbell, so naturally his nickname is Soup. So, but Soup, we appreciate what you've done here tonight, and you won't step up thanks. You're a good community, and you guys are good people, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, Soup. You've been like a brother to us since I've been in office here.
I'd like to have one more ear.
I hope I have five, but you never have. Soup, now you're welcome to stay around. We have some midrussing here that you may like.
It's usually having a little bit of air, but I'm glad to have it.
We have one item, well, item of our own business, and that's the second reading discussion of orders 2014-18, amend ordinance of transadverses 1998-15. You know, the council received the information from our attorney, and the language has been changed.
I would make one note, Councilman Tebby, you're correct. In 14, in 114-03B, I did have an extra, an extra knot that I struck. So, that now reads that no peddler, solicitor, or interadversary will be permitted to solicit for commercial purposes door-to-door in residential areas through the city or from house to house to sell exposed.
Discussion, council?
I had a no and a not. I got a no and a not.
Counsel, we need discussion. We've spent a lot of time on, I think, between everybody's opinions and efforts, our senior attorney with language, I think we will finalize something that works for the council and the city as well. Discussion starts. If there is no discussion, I would entertain a motion to vote the passing of second final reading of orders 2014-18.
Some of the.
As you mentioned.
Right. As you mentioned. Motion made by Daryl.
Second.
And second for Jamie. Need further discussion? Hearing none, call those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
And approve the same sign. Passage down, sir. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Mark Copeland, early report from the EDC.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Mark.
About a year ago, I came up here and stood before you to let you know some very pleasing information that we had, that Greensburg and Decatur County were creating jobs at the second fastest rate in all of Indiana, all counties in Indiana. This year, I have other good news that Greensburg, Decatur County should be proud of, and that is that we're creating jobs at a rate faster than all of our neighbors, including Columbus, Bartholomew County. So that's something that we can all be proud of here. I hope you have the overview of the report that I have sent for you to take a look at. And under the existing business services part, we are working with MPW Industrial Systems through the Region Nine Growth Board to help with the certification for quality inspector that some of their painters have. They're a subcontractor of Honda. And we're working with a fellow named Mike Ames, who is part of that newly reorganized Region Nine Workforce Board. It's because of the, some of the great momentum and job growth that we have, that I'm able to focus a little bit more time on some of the quality-of-life type jobs that we like to have here. Retail, commercial, and that's what manufacturing does. With that so-called magic multiplier that they have, in manufacturing, with the, tending to be better paid, better benefits, it tends to support three to four service sector jobs. So, in, as an example, working with a main, with the Main Street, one of the Main Street committees, we're working to try to keep the Tree City Cleaners here with new ownership. If you folks happen to hear of a entrepreneur that may be interested in owning a good business, the Tree City Cleaners business, please let a number of the organizations here that work with, work in the area of economic development, the Chamber, Main Street, our own Economic Development Corporation, a name, and we'd be glad to talk with them on behalf of Tree City Cleaners. They've done a great job. The ownership is ready to retire, and they're looking for another owner. Again, with the, in the Main Street Committee, I'm working on with more retail, new business development and attraction, possibly a new business or two on the square, our square. It's my understanding that a number of years ago, long before I was here, there was a shoe repair shop, a leather shop, that was in, I think, one of the barber shops here. I'm familiar with a franchise that I knew from Tennessee, and there's actually one in Greenwood, Indiana, that's excellent. And I talked to the franchiseur in Atlanta, and they gave us, it's a very good opportunity. The technology of this company called HAKKY, H-A-K-K-Y. If you happen to been in the Greenwood Mall, you may have seen them. I'd say it's about a third the size of this room that they have their shoe repair in. And they do a lot of leather working, like my kids had their ball gloves relaced at this kind of place. It would be a great small business on the square. You know, women could have purses fixed, maybe lunchtime, their shoes repaired if a heel broke, something like that. But, so that's a type of quality-of-life type service sector business we're able to focus on a little bit right now. Because the manufacturers are doing quite well, you see the help wanted signs out in front of Itachi, Valio. So, working on those kind of things. And again, in new business development and attraction, I'll be, I'll be traveling on an economic development mission with one of our regional partners, I-74 Group. And that will be in April. We'll be going to Cleveland and Columbus, Ohio, to talk with companies and also with site selection consultants there about the benefits of a Greensburg, Decatur County location. In, all the way through to December, the state IEDC asked if I would come with them on a mission to Dallas, Texas, for a similar type of purpose. And they do a bang-up job. They do a really good job in working with site consultants and companies that they've been in touch with. So we'll be working with that. If you have a chance to look at our newly created website, please do. We also, we put news on there to show people that could be looking at the website, consultants and so forth, about what's going on in Greensburg. As a matter of fact, the, one of the things I spoke of just a few minutes ago, the growth rate pace here in Greensburg is on that site. So if you have any time, a few minutes to look at that, please do. If you have any recommendations for news items going on there, please let us know, and we can put that on there. Again, we have a committee of sorts, as part of our Economic Development Corporation, we call them the Growth Committee, the Community Growth Committee. We're looking at attracting a new grocery store here in this community. We are also exploring possibilities of a community meeting center. Would be a regional draw, because there's not such a center. Mayor Campbell was here, and North Vernon is not, and Shelbyville is not, Rushville is not. What is that? What, could you inform me of that?
They have a, they have a large meeting center for, I think it's about 300, 200, 300 people.
Two, 300?
Yeah. I was actually talking with the city there, and they, they said it's probably one of the least-used buildings in the city.
Really?
But they have a huge, I only found it two weeks ago, I found out, we have a meeting.
I'll be darned.
They have one there. It's right off of, if you go off 74, the second exit off, what is it, 113, the second exit, and you go past the Texas Corral and go back there, it's right here back there.
I'm sure that that's a fine facility, and it might meet a number of the needs of that community. Where we have some loss is where our Chamber of Commerce would go to Columbus for a 500-person event, where our, where Honda has meetings, where they would have 400 people that are coming into town. There's really nothing of the size that could accommodate, Jamie, 500 or more. So, we're just taking, we're taking a look at that right now. And, you know, not to, not to compete with anything here, but we think of that size and that nature, it would be a benefit to this entire community. And people that we've spoken with said they could see the good in that. So, we are taking a close look. We're gonna, we may have a study done on that.
Mark, I think what made the purpose of Shelbyville, that small meeting center, is there, if the game that you see on the horse track, they got multiple different capacities.
They do.
And that's what it's perfect.
Right. Well, that's, those are a couple of things that this Growth Group looking at, and how to continue to attract young people, young adults to the community, like Chris Stephen and his family. What are they interested in? Maybe, you know, young people may have left, and they probably could be interested in coming back to Greensburg. We see a lot of cases of that. So, that's some of the things.
Housing.
That we're concentrating on with housing. You'll see something announced on that, I'd say, within a few weeks. We have a bank that's very interested in doing that. And you can take a couple guesses, and you know, you probably get it. I'll let them announce that. So, if you have any questions, I'd love to try to answer. Just let me know, what do you think?
Questions, counsel? Questions, comments?
Anything on the ponderosa? I've had rumors.
Be straightforward, yes, there is. There is a possibility of another restaurant coming in there. And that originated from one of the consultants in Cincinnati that I'd had fortune, good fortune of meeting with and talking to, and he likes Greensburg. He's helped put a couple of small operations here, like the Dollar Tree, one, I, offhand, I can't think of, there was, there was one other, but there's this, he's working on this, too, with a local development. So, I'd say, hopefully, if things go right, then we'll have a, another restaurant there on Lincoln Street, where the ponderosa is empty. Thank you, Terry. Anybody else?
Good information. Thank you for sharing, Mark.
Appreciate it, Daryl. Thank you, Jamie, thank you for your question. We'll see you.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Next item, Attorney General Chief Brendan Bridges, City Police Chief.
Start off with, today we have a newest member of the Greensburg Police Department that started today, Stephen Hirschberger. Mr. Hirschberger is from Rush County. He will, he is tentatively slated to go to the academy at the end of July. He is married, his wife Heather, they have a 10-month-old baby, girl. And he is, like I said, from Rush County. He worked as a full-time communication officer with the Rushville Police Department, and he was also on their reserves. And he also did some volunteer work with one of the fire departments up there. So we are happy to have Mr. Hirschberger on the Greensburg Police Department. Hey, shy.
Brendan, would you like to announce the promotions as well?
Yes, I could do that. Bobby Zaffey, who is currently in Investigations as an Investigator II, will be moving up to the Investigator I spot, which is a, equal to a Lieutenant spot on the road. Jared McCalvin, who is currently a Sergeant, has been promoted to Lieutenant. And Michael McNeely and Joe Radcliffe, who are both Patrolmen, have been promoted to the two Sergeant slots that were opened up with the promotions of two others. And then Steve Barnes is currently now working Investigations, so.
These are no additional, these are replacements.
Yep, monies are already there, and then it should take effect on March the 22nd, because we're looking to have that form in full effect, so.
Brendan, while we're making announcements, I'd like to introduce Marco Farman, who is will take the position of Assistant Chief of one of the shifts where are three Assistant Chiefs. And David Farman. David is currently a captain, and this is something that I've been going, been planning for a few months now due to retirement of Assistant Chief Garrett, basically. And David can step into his spot on that shift.
Congratulations.
David, you'd like to tell a bit about yourself?
Well, I started with the fire department as a volunteer in 1992, went career in 1996, and then in 2013 was promoted to the captain's position, so.
He's an experienced person. Well, we're the Assistant Chief position, I'm sure. Say, Greenberg, good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
The other thing that I have, you will find packets in front of you for Central Dispatch discussion. And originally, I wasn't going to present this this evening, but when I sent out an email to everybody, there was some conflicts with other meetings, and I know Council President Kane has another function going on also. Since then, I found out that Councilman Tebby and the mayor, I believe the meeting you guys had scheduled has been canceled. So that could, if we're, if you're still wanting to have that meeting, I don't see why we still couldn't possibly meet with the county on the 10th. We just had to find some way, at least getting some information related to Council President On the 4th of this month, which will be Wednesday, there will be a vote for the 911 Board to pretty much proceed with Central Dispatch, which will be combining, combining the two 911 centers into one. At that point in time, then it's going to be thrown to the city council and county council for discussions. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me. If I can't answer them, then there are a couple people here that should be able to answer those for you. But I wanted to make sure you guys at least had some information in front of you before the meetings here in the near future, so.
It's on the 10th at.
That is, on the 10th at 6:30 PM at the Sheriff's Department. It'll be at the EOC room, which will be in the backside where the, I believe it's a gym used to be there at the, so.
Procedural question.
Sure.
Procedural question. So, the meeting on the 10th, where they have the joint city and county and council meeting, this is a informational meeting, kind of early, or is it a meeting where?
That is correct. That is correct.
And then next steps would be for a decision to be made sometime along the way, when do you anticipate that? And is that decision, or will there be a, I guess, if, maybe, maybe I'm asking a question ahead of information, we need to hear the information first, but I, I just, was curious as to, will this be laid out where we're agreeing to a model or a plan that's already been developed? Or will the two councils, through committees, or on means of discussion and coming up with how it's going to be structured and who's going to do what and who's responsible and how we're going to share in this? That will then eventually be brought to a decision, I suppose, by each council in several.
Right, and a lot of that information, so the pack has already got kind of what they're looking to implement, which is done by the nine-one-one board.
So, they're bringing, they're bringing proposals?
Yes, yeah, and then there's going to, of course, be some financial questions in that. And then there's going to be other concerns that are going to be brought. The nine-one-one, we have asked questions of both city and county dispatchers, their concerns. We have one of the, over those is the nine-one-one board. We've tried to answer as much as we can, a lot of those are not going to be able to be answered until we move along a little bit forward in the process. So, we can only give them brief answers and stuff. So, like I said, there's still some stuff that needs to be worked out. And like I said, I believe, and like I said, I'm just new to this in January from when I first learned this, but from what I've heard in the past, what's been talked about, and what I've heard now, it's moving quicker than it ever has, and there's more planning that has been put into place on this. And a lot of it goes to be Spillman that's coming in in June, that's going to be one big factor, is what they're looking at is with Spillman, so.
I have a question for the council, would you like for our party to attend these meetings?
I think it would be a good idea.
Oh, well, you have a reason for this. This is the first time, people, everybody's new, you know, basically, I support some of these plans, give us that, and work as possible.
And those, some of those figures in the PowerPoint and stuff, Ralph can easily tell you. I would not base anything on some of those figures, and some of those figures will change, it's just depending on what is in the nine-one-one budget at this point in time. So, those numbers are going to fluctuate a little bit here and there, so like I said, some of those figures are not set in stone, so.
And maybe get ahead of herself again as well, but the only real concern that I've heard is from the employment side of it, where city employees will become county employees, and their base pay might be higher than what it is now.
Yes.
But the annual increase filters that. What's the term for the?
The long, the longevity, yes. And like I said, I mean, that's the stuff that we're just going to have to look at once everybody starts meeting, so. And like I said, I will definitely send out emails Wednesday after the meeting to update you guys on what occurred in our meeting. That way you guys have the up-to-date information, so.
Anything else, counsel?
Appreciate it, Brendan. While we're on this promotion thing as well, we are actively pursuing a chief in the near future. So, we have a plan set out how to proceed. Speaking to people to be interested to see what we can do in terms of the first. This is most of the downward disappointment by the mayor. This is a situation where we have several close to equal candidates. And if we review them in the near future, then we'll, I will bring people who are working in the executive session for that. Then, trying to be there as well, and make decisions. So, hopefully, the next month, we will have a chief, a project. A city engineer, and a lot of that as well. There'll be one individual twice. I'm speaking with him again, to answer all the people's questions. Talk to Richard, Gary, Gary Larry, people here, and sit down and speak with Gary as well. And then I have another party sitting down that Thursday evening. That, also, hopefully, we'll have a city engineer back on staff, who are still, who are still pumped up for thirty days or so. So, I suppose we'll grab them that. Anything else, counsel? Building the objectives that we have.
So, you said that Mr. Murray is going to be here tomorrow, so.
Yeah, what's, what's in his own company? What's happened, we're in the middle of three different plan deals. And they might see that plan where it went rock and hard, and these were something to come along all of a sudden, sure they did. So, he's working on those, and he's coming down here on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and working on this.
So, we're paying the company?
Yes, yes, we have a, we have a short-term contract, until we get somebody else on the board. And with Gary, he's been very good about, I think we need information to make phone calls to him. And I'll charge him, pass things that he's involved with. He's been very, very good to work with, and keeps going, and is still.
So. Once we hire somebody, you expect then that this contract with Gary's firm will cease?
Yes, yes, as soon as we make the change over.
And the major, it is actually written into the contract that it is for the limited duration of the period of time between his last official day in the capacity of the engineer and the hiring of a new signature. So, by, by this, by the actual scope of the contract, it will end after the engineer's time.
But we got to have someone to carry on, and it's best to have someone that's been, been involved. Any questions on that, counsel? We'll ask somebody higher as quick as possible, but here's talks, we're still looking thirty, forty, fifty days to get somebody in here.
Because?
Most engineers, they have contracts within their companies to give notice, they will take so long before they can re-lease from their contracts. Okay, anything else, counsel? Mr. COVID, do you have your boardwalk report, please?
Sure, just a couple of things on the boardwork agenda tonight. Mark Kloskemper brought bids for the bridge on Van Deel Road, brought three bids. The winning bid was for four hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. Went to Paul H. Rowe Company, he's also the contractor that will be doing the Van Deel Road project, so. Worked out pretty good there. Wendy Blake from Main Street, Greensburg, came asking for street closure for May the ninth. Washington Street and then the inside part of Main Street will be closed from the morning until about seven AM that night. This is for the Fisher Five, which is a big wheel race for adults. Councilman Tebby, I volunteered you to represent the council in that.
Thank you.
And your other activity?
I'll change tomorrow.
Jamie's co-pilot.
That's all I have, that's probably enough.
A little explanation on Van Deel Road, Paul H. Rowe Company, that is a federally project on the road itself. And that was taken care of by the end of, that's, we're selecting them. And then they did bid on the bridge, and it kind of works out better if you have the company doing both, so it's a good project. And that will begin this spring, and be done this, this summer.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the bridge is covered by the TIF monies?
That's, we've had to put some money in it over the years, and, but we have received. Mr. Kloskemper, if your mind serves, one point two million, we get federally.
Are you talking the road or the bridge?
The road.
The road. We were programmed at one point two million, the actual bid was eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Because we had some cost for right-of-way acquisition, we had to pay ten percent instead of twenty, they gave us match credits. They reimbursed us for eighty percent of the utilities, they've had easements. So, they're reimbursed against approximately a hundred and sixty thousand on that. And then the inspection contract, they'll reimburse eight percent of that, which is around another eighty-nine thousand. And so, our cost will be twenty percent on the two utilities, the inspection contract, which is ten percent of the project.
And part of this bridge was money that was left over from Honda, that they originally said they would put on the infrastructure. And it's three point two million left, that city-county went together and split that amount. And we bought a new truck, we did, the county bought a new truck, we bought the, our saw-brine machine. And we took the bridge as a city project, and we will be that back on the county as soon as that's completed.
There was also a siren placed out in the Honda area, tornado siren.
Stop light in letting.
The stop light in front of Honda was paid with TIF funds, as were the supplemental lights at their entrance. There was a couple more, Rick's Waterline Extension with a looping of, what, Freeland Road back around to Moscow. That, that's been a part of the entrance way, was also included in the TIF money that came from Honda.
So, it's been very fortunate that we had that, it's something a lot of my national. Anything else, council, any questions in service?
Got a couple of, please, follow-up questions if I was in time. The comprehensive planning plan, or, hold on. What's the status? We haven't heard anything since months ago when we said, you asked me what to do with it.
Meetings have been set, and there have been some meetings. Mark, you know as much about that as I do, but there have been some meetings, and, and we're waiting to, to use regular, uh, facts.
Just a, I follow up on that. Sure, what's the representation for this board, is there anybody from this board that has been chosen?
I still leave some positions open.
I guess, I, there's been no discussion by the city with the city plan commission about this, which I think would be an appropriate place to have some discussion about. We've gotten nothing, and I, as I understand, there's, there's a whole schedule of meetings, schedule, there's a whole agenda. And there's been no, nothing, to my knowledge, about it being safety either input or, or even information, oh, by the way, this is what's going to happen. And my contrast, and the reason I'm so aware of it, my contrast, in terms of the county, there's been a good bit of involvement of the county, the county, the county commission in establishing those hearings and what was interested and what kinds of data, how you wanted to approach it and those kinds of things, so. I guess I just was a little disappointed for one, but, and maybe, maybe it'll get picked up here and everybody will get kind of geared in, but it's been kind of sub rosa, just.
It is the first thing to get it, but, Glenn, what I will do is contact the government tomorrow and give a report of where they're at, what's going on, and at this time, who is on what committee and what positions are letting me go.
Thank you.
That way we'll, we'll, we'll know what's going on, maybe the same way.
And I've got another questions to follow up. I know, again, this was a few months ago, there was a request, a request to support paying for personnel handbook review or, and I just wondered what this guy's looking at. Why don't you get back to it? I mean, I, it was. I mean, I understand, it is.
I can go back through the notes and, and let you know where we're at, and I wasn't prepared, so I can, I can.
But there will be some.
I would like to see us get the personnel committee together, though, because you've got some job descriptions that are not through. You've got, there's a few things in the policy that probably still need to be addressed, that, like, kind of hot topic, I guess you'd call them items. So, I, I didn't want to reach out to any kind of consulting person, so maybe I am not yet. I didn't want to reach out to more consulting hours if we weren't ready to move forward with some of those things, that makes sense.
That was my question initially, if you were prepared to ask that.
Sorry, you caught my card. I didn't think that question would be for me, but anyway. I just didn't want to use consulting dollars if we weren't ready to give them something to look at, does that make sense? So, that's, I mean, so it's kind of nice thing still.
That's fine, I mean, I've no.
I don't want it to be, but it's.
I'm not the sort of pusher that has to happen, I just was.
But nothing is happening, how about that?
There, there are, we'll have to.
There are some things that need to probably be worked on, but it would have to be.
So, that, that brings up another related question. We talked about, and we had authorized, at least in terms of the pay, for a safety coordinator position. Has that been, has that been implemented?
Each department has a, each department was supposed to have a safety coordinator. We have one department that doesn't have one in place. And we are currently working on getting those people together with, like, for instance, like the Workman's Comp Company. Like, they've got somebody that said they would kind of help put those people in the right, you know. And once we got those people established, then we can have a meeting with the safety people, so that's like on my list. Because like, there's some other compliance stuff that we probably need to be doing also, so some follow-up on some of that.
That's it.
So, that's our next thing, is to get all the safety people in there together. Like, so we've got one department that didn't name, or can't seem to get somebody to, to volunteer, but, but all the other, okay, the rest has.
Okay, so as of January, then, it would be going to be paid, these people begin to, begin to be paid for their position as safety coordinator?
The nine dollars a week is, I don't think we've, that's in the salary ordinance, but it's not been implemented on payroll yet, so I don't guess.
Well, again, yeah, my, my question, another related question, that is, as far as a job description, that's not been approved yet, has it?
No, that's why.
So, how do we have somebody in that role list with no job description?
They're not practicing yet.
Yeah, they're, the salary ordinance is the only thing that we established.
Right, I understand, and we were waiting on, waiting on.
So, we don't have the job description, so we're, like I said, we really need to get the personnel of the policy.
That's fine, it is one of the big.
We started one, but I don't know that we approved it here in this board, I believe, but if there's a rough draft.
We have a job description, Councilman Kane has been.
Yeah, yeah. We had the job description, we just didn't approve. We just haven't approved it by this.
And there's a couple things we want to go through.
Asked if we looked at it, and then we didn't put it back on our agenda to.
This one, saying we have to have Personnel Committee meeting, which consists of Blake, Jamie, Steve Simmons, and myself to work these items out. There's a, after that, there's, thank you, we'll add discuss.
That way we can present it to the count, to the council.
If that's be done on a Saturday, we can do that, but we need to get this done.